Just real quickly, and I know I gotta finish up here, but on the third page, I went through and I copied it for you so you have it in the back. But of the counties in Georgia that have enacted this tax, there's 80 counties that have been enacted out of 150 counties. So it's exactly 50% of the counties that have this tax, okay? And I've turned it down a little. Of those counties that have it, only 21 are at 8%. Okay, so half the counties in Georgia don't have it, only 21 have it. There's, at 5%, there is 46 counties that are at 5%. Yeah, so these counties, what do they know if we don't? And why is the vast majority of 58% set at 5%? And the ones that are at 21%, they basically are, half of them are on the interstate by 75, different things you can look at. All right, so just a couple of questions. Here's what I'd like, I'd like for you other commissioners to just study this, look at this. I've left my phone number, I can give you more information, but I'd really like for you to revisit this tax because I feel like it is really hurting the vacation rental owners in this county. And, you know, that's the bottom line really is. If we don't eradicate it, we should at least make it work more on with the counties, with the rest of the counties in state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else would like to speak or anybody at that time? Okay, we're gonna move forward down our agenda then. And at this time, we have Nadine's gonna come to us and talk about our CIRP program, so y'all come on up and tell us what you, what y'all do.
I'm Joni Carter. I also work with Nadine. I'm the Assistant Director of Walker County Community Emergency Response Team. I've been a resident of Walker County for 25 years. I have worked in Walker County schools, specifically LaFayette High School and LaFayette Middle School for those 25 years. I serve as the Assistant Director here for the team and have been a member of that team for 14 years. I also serve as the Emergency Coordinator of Walker County Amateur Radio Emergency Services Team for the past 10. Amateur radio allows us to communicate across the street, the county, the state, the country, and the world, all while using our time, our energy, and our talent and equipment without the existing power and communications infrastructure. With a radio, a wire, and a battery, we can communicate. When all else fails, amateur radio can get the message through. So what is the value of amateur radio in Walker County? We have a weekly on-air meeting, if we refer to as networks, or shortened to NETS. These NETS average six hours every week. So these six hours of on-air training every week times 52 gives us 312 hours per year of just those on-air trainings. Since 2011, Walker County operators have had well over 3,100 hours of on-air training. This does not count public events that we also participate in, like the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Chickmogga, the LaFayette Fly-In, or the Honeybee Festival. Nor does it count the weather events like the tornadoes of 2011, or the Easter tornadoes of 2020, or any of dozens of severe weather watches and warnings for which we also have NETS. Nor does it count the hours of training that we have every two years as stormspotters through the National Weather Service's Skyborne Training. This training is three hours for each ham operator who participates as a stormspotter. So what is the value of amateur radio in Walker County? Well, using the information that I've provided you, and this comes from an independent source referred to here as Independent Sectors, you'll notice the value there for Georgia of volunteer hours, as was computed by this organization, over the past 20 years. So, over the past 10 years, the value of our volunteer hours, those 3,100 some odd hours, the value of those volunteer hours in training and just weekly NETS alone is just shy of $75,000. $74,667.94, to be exact. A substantial contribution, I believe you would all agree. Every June, amateur radio operators host a 24-hour event that we call Field Day. For 2021, we gathered at Cedar Grove Community Center, down in the Cedar Grove community at the lookout mountain, for the 25th, 26th, and 27th of June. During that Field Day time, we had at least 75 people participating who volunteered a total of 715 hours that weekend. The value of the volunteer hours for Field Day 2021 was just over $20,000 in training time, back to the community, if we love. $20,406.10, to be exact. Many ask, what is the value of amateur radio to our communities? If you ask one's hams, they value their friends, and their family, and the communities of Walker County. A substantial value, I think we would all agree. That is why we, as amateur radio operators, provide our time, our energy, our talent, and equipment at a moment's notice. Thank you.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How many ham operators do we have in your, if you?
In which county?
Here in Walker.
In Walker, we have 269.
Wow.
We are the fourth largest, we have the fourth largest amount of amateur radio operators with any county that touches Walker.
So we don't, we got 269, and plus, and the counties around us have numerous as well, so there's a huge network of communication out there.
Absolutely.
Awesome, that is awesome. Great information.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm with Walker County, Georgia, SERC, SERC's Space for Community Emergency Response Team. We are all volunteers. I serve as the Director of the SERC program. I have been with the program for 10 years. I am a certified trainer with GMA. I have had the pleasure of going to New Mexico Tech twice for terrorism training. I have worked with mentally handicapped and Alzheimer's patients for 30 years. I am also a ham operator. What SERC did, we trained people to help their families be prepared of any kind of disaster. After a SERC member has made sure their family is safe, then they will check their neighborhood. If it is all clear there, then they will come to their SERC location. They will check the areas as they come through and make notes of anyone needing assistance. So if we come to a disaster, once we get to that disaster zone, we can do triage, we can do anything that needs to be done. At the request of our EMA Director, Chief Blake Moore, SERC will open shelters throughout the county when needed. We teach fire suppression at private industries such as shop industries, the audio plant, and at government businesses such as the Walker Transit and the Walker County Sheriff's Department. We also have a rehab bus that we have assisted with the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department. We have also assisted in mutual aid. We teach 16-hour classes that are free to anyone who wants to take them in the county. They can call my number, which is 423-637-2245, if they're interested, and we can go from there. In the last eight years, we have put in over 7,262 hours of volunteer time. Using the chart you were handed, the value of our volunteer time, our hours is $172,346.56. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for everything you did.
Y'all do a phenomenal job in Walker County, and I know some of the events I've been involved in as Commissioner, and y'all being able to open up the shelters for us, and staff those, and take care of the people, it's just phenomenal. So thank you, and thank you to the team. Okay, moving forward here. Okay, under new business, we have a resolution here that I will read. Resolution R. 29-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a Chairperson of the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties dedicated to the Chairman of the Board is to appoint members and chairpersons to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board, and whereas Chairman Shannon Kegwith-Phil Smith, the following appointment, to serve as the Chairperson of the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission, John Colpepper, for a term ending on December 31st of 2022. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of John Colpepper to serve as Chairperson of the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission is approved, resolved the date, the 8th of July 2021. Back a few meetings ago, we reestablished the Historic Preservation Commission and appointed members. Then we can go back now, we're just appointing the Chairperson so this committee can get to working, or this, actually, this commission can get to working. So it's recommended to me that John Colpepper would do a great job, and so it's my recommendation as a motion to this Board that we approve John Colpepper to be the Chairperson. So he's already on this board, he would just be the Chairperson of this commission, excuse me. So we have a second for this.
Question, please, sir. For what matter of fact?
This would be the term ending of December 31st of 2022. So do we have a motion, or any other questions?
Make the motion. Will you accept your nomination?
Okay, I guess that would be a second. I'm sorry, I messed up. So make the motions if you're second.
I'll second your motion, put Mr. Colpepper in the chair on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Next resolution, R. 30-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property from various departments an unserviceable surplus and remove from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 36-9-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order enter on its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may likely be disposed of and may access it as a sufficient title thereof before or behalf of the county. Whereas various departments with the Walker County Government have requested property listed on Exhibit A be deemed unserviceable surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory. Whereas a notice of public auction of Walker County Government surplus is scheduled to be published on July the 14th, 2021, in the Walker County Messenger's legal order. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the property listed in Exhibit A attached hereto and may apart hereof by hereby declaring unserviceable surplus and remove from the county inventory items listed in Exhibit A and shall be sold at public auction in Walker County Act Center at 152 Highway 27 in Rock Springs at 6:00 PM on Thursday, July the 22nd, 2021, resolved and adopted the 8th day of July. So we have about, I think, 11 or 12 vehicles listed here. There's a lot of share of these vehicles, I think either have engine problems, transmission problems, and a couple of them, engine and transmission problems. So you can see by the mileage, there's one vehicle here over 300,000 miles, all of them well over 100,000, and a couple of them over, three of them over 200,000 miles. So they've been, they've worked pretty hard. So we have a motion to approve these items to be surplus and sold.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, and we have a second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the Board?
One question, so is that same day you sell the SS equipment in the Act Center?
Yes, good point. There's another list that we approved a couple of meetings by, more office type of equipment that's at the Act Center. All of this will be sold at one time on July the 22nd.
Correct.
Good question. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Okay, we have another resolution, R. 31-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to not require issuance of mobile home decals. Whereas OCGA 48-5-492 has been revised to provide the county Board of Commissioners the authority to determine whether a decal is required to be issued and affixed to each mobile home as evidence of payment of all abhorrent taxes due by mobile home owner. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas the Walker County Tax Commissioner has informed the Walker County Board of Commissioners that the issuance of said mobile home decals is an unnecessary expense for Walker County, and the non-issuance of mobile home decals does not relieve the mobile home owners from any payment of the abhorrent tax. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that a decal is not required to be issued and affixed to each mobile home as evidence of the payment of all abhorrent taxes due to the mobile home owner. And it's further resolved that nothing in this resolution shall relieve the mobile home owner from payment of all abhorrent taxes on the county tax commissioner from collecting of said abhorrent taxes, so resolved the 8th day of July. This was a request that was made by our tax commissioner, who's with us tonight. Have you got anything you want to add to this? Would you like to come up and say anything? No, I'm putting you on the spot.
That's all right.
If the Board has any questions as well, that's our tax commissioner on this side.
This is not a spur of the moment thing. Thank y'all for letting me be here. Good to see everybody. There's been much discussion for several years about this, and it has come to the detection that basically those decals are like a dinosaur. They're an expense to the county that does nothing, really. Just when we start ordering them. There's about 5,000 mobile homes in the county. We spend over $500 a year buying those pretty little decals that nobody likes. Then people don't put them on their homes. So just this week, a mobile home park owner, our manager, was on the phone with one of my staff for a long time, trying to determine which one of the 50 or 60 he got in the mail at our expense. Which one went on which home? He didn't know. He didn't know how to write the receipt. He didn't understand it. So it's more confusion, and it doesn't help. If you want me to see a list of delinquent mobile homes, I can print you one in five minutes. You can bring it up on your phone, carry it with you from house to house, park to park, if you want to look. So this is just something that's constantly counting thousands of dollars, much more than that. There's money in the mail, and everyone has to be mailed out basically, and the price $0.52 a stamp, and then you've got the printing of the receipts and all that. So we just felt like that we're constantly counting money for something nobody appreciates and doesn't use. And that's all.
Yeah, very good summary. Any questions in the Board?
I just, I'd like to thank you for your due diligence there because, like you said, it is an expense to us that's not necessary with your record keeping that you have now. So thank you and your office for bringing that to us and helping to save the taxpayers' money as well.
And Senator Mullis, with the help of our Board of Assessors, and myself talking with him, he presented this statewide, it's not just us. So any county in the state can now choose to do this for the, for the Lord.
This option went into effect this year.
Went into July 1st.
July 1st, this option is available to every county in the state for the governing authority to make the final decision if the stickers are deemed necessary or not. So every county can make that decision. So we appreciate the hard work that's been put into this from, I know Terry, you put a lot of time into this, and also Senator Mullis and Representative Targant have all worked collaboratively together, along with Representative Mike Cameron. So we appreciate all of them working on behalf of our delegation here in our Walker County Government. So we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve this resolution.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Harding, any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution passes. Okay, now we've got a good one here. So Ms. Beverly Foster, if you wanted to start making your way up to the podium, because I'm gonna, I want you to talk about this and give us some information as well. As you're coming up, I'm gonna go ahead and read this resolution, kind of set the stage and put this in context for everybody that's here watching via Facebook. It says, "Resolution R. -0321, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to approve use of the Wardlaw Building by the Walker County African American Historical and Alumni Association. Whereas the Walker County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor the countless contributions made by the African Americans in Walker County, both past and present. Whereas Walker County owns the Wardlaw Building located at 309 North Main Street in LaFayette. Whereas the Marsh House Board of Trustees, the Walker County Historical Society, and the Northwest Georgia Arts Guild have previously utilized the Wardlaw Building for the benefit of the community. And whereas there exists a group of Walker County citizens united in an effort to establish a Walker County African American Museum and Culture Center that will result in a social, historical, and economic advancement of all citizens of Walker County. And whereas the Wardlaw Building is currently being vacated and is prominently situated to accommodate the proposed museum. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County has hereby resolved that in keeping with established practices of the community use of this building to make this space available for the purpose of establishing the first ever Walker County African American Museum and Culture Center. And be it further resolved that the Board authorizes and empowers the Chairman to execute a lease agreement with the Walker County African American Historical and Alumni Association Inc. for the use of the county-owned assets effective November 1st of 2021, so resolved and adopted the 8th day of July 2021." Those of you that may not know where this building is, it's in front of Food City on Main Street in LaFayette. It's the former Long John Silver's Building, and that building was donated to the county several years ago, and was prominently known as the Wardlaw Building. And so Ms. Beverly Foster, we're gonna ask you to speak at this time and give us some more information about the great plans that y'all have for the use of this space.
Okay, to Commissioner Liffel and Blake Moore, Ashley, and Stoltz, thank you so much. And we members of Walker County African American History and Heritage Museum and Task Force, which, as I call your names, stand up please, which consists of Ms. Sharon Beres, if you're present, Alex Coleman, Andrew Gibber, Alma Benton, Gail Ware, Robert Marsh, Robert Worlon, Willie Davis, Eddie Foster Senior, Ben Stoller, Eddie Upshaw, William Nasson, Wilma Nasson, Connie Farsham, Stacy Song, and myself, and members of the National History and Heritage Preservation Committee, Ms. Catherine and Ms. Barbara, if you stand up please, and our supporters, Dr. David Bull and Dr. Adam Ware, if you stand up please, and our executive committee members who will guide us through this challenge, Ms. Elizabeth Wells, Mayor Andy Arnold, and David Hamilton. We propose that the building, known as the Welcome Center of Wardlaw Building, located at 309 North Main Street, LaFayette, Row 307-28, be repurposed and designated for management by the Walker County African American Historical Alumni Association, Incorporated, as an African American History and Heritage Center. This will be the first museum in Walker County designated specifically for highlighting and exhibiting the heritage and legacy of Walker County African Americans. This museum will represent the entire Walker County citizenship, as African American history is everyone's history. And African Americans are known to have been contributing to Walker County since circa 1539, 1549, with the travels of the Soto, the enslavement of African Americans in this area by Native Americans, and circa 1833, 1865, the enslavement of African Americans by Walker County European pioneers. The Task Force has received the support from, to change of this management, as Commissioner Liffel said, from the Walker County Historical Society, Northwest Arts Guild, City of Lafayette, and the Marsh Village Clemens House Board of Trustees, who are presently using the building for this change of management. The Task Force proposal is a proposal for inclusion. We wish positive representation of the heritage of Walker County African Americans beyond the antebellum representation presently on the square. We love the antebellum representation that's on the square. We ask only for inclusion. Surrounding counties have embraced their multicultural heritage and antebellum era. For example, Whistle County has repurposed their once segregated Main Street School into an African American Heritage Center. Patouse County highlighted their World War II African American heritage in a sixth cavalry museum. Also, Patouse County uses their once segregated Whistle African American school as their Ringo High School ROTC building. Furthermore, Patouse County and Datta Park has Northwest Georgia's most multicultural memorial park. We propose Walker County Government repurposed the Wardlaw Building as African American Museum managed by Walker County African American Historical Alumni Association, Incorporated, and be awarded all the privileges that are presently being awarded to the Walker County Historical Society, the Northwest Arts Guild, and the Marsh Village Clemens House Board of Trustees, and the City of Lafayette. Those privileges, also, once again, I'm gonna skip down on this. Once again, we seek inclusion with the formation of Walker County's African American Museum, the Culture Center, and the Wardlaw Building to exhibit Walker County's African American accomplishments, history, and heritage beyond the antebellum era of Walker County, on Walker County's County Seat Square in the City of Lafayette. Furthermore, we feel that historical diversity will be of assistance to Walker County in its present state's steps of economical and educational advancement. Thank you.
Any Board members have any questions to Ms. Colpepper?
Sure, I wanna say I appreciate your efforts. I met you at the Walker County Sheriff's place, and I was amazed at how much you knew about not only African Americans, but black people in Walker County in general and the whole. It's a blessing to have you and all your folks working on this.
My family's been in Walker County, I know since before 1830.
Right. Thoroughly correct by the knowledge that you had of those.
My family has taught me well in Northwest Georgia history.
Mm-hmm. Just right.
Any other questions?
Reiterate what Commissioner Harding said, thank you for your part, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Foster, for speaking. We do have one additional person I'd like to recognize and speak before we take action on this. Mr. Stacy Song, would you like to come up for a second, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Stacy Song. I should appreciate this privilege to be here today, or thank Commissioner Liffel, Blake Moore, Askew, Mr. Harding, Mr. Stoltz. This is a monumental moment for us all, because this is the first time this ever happened. I try to reflect back to my parents, and what they would say to my brother, my brothers from their grandparents, and they would be overwhelmed with joy at this moment, that this city, this county, has found a way to embrace diversity. And when you embrace diversity, you make for a strong community. Again, I want to thank you all for doing this. I want to thank the, at Walker County African American Builders Association for allowing me to speak. It's a privilege to be here, and it's a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A privilege to have you here.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and this time, let's begin further discussion from the Board on this resolution. If not, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve this.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. And I would ask that all of you that have been involved in this in any capacity, after we do our Commissioner comments, before we go into our executive session, we'd like to get you to come up here and let's do a group photo of everybody. So if you've been involved in this in any way, if you're part of the Task Force, or an executive member, or just a citizen that's been helping out behind the scenes, we want everybody to come up here and let's all get a group picture with the Commissioners, because this is a very historic time in Walker County, and we want to document this and share this across the country. across the country. So, please stay with us just for a couple of quick photos. Okay, at this time, we'll come to our agenda, we'll ask for the commissioner comments at this time, so Commissioner Whitford, anything you'd like to mention?
I'd just like to thank everybody for being here tonight, thank all you guys for the hard work you all put in on this particular item. And as always, if you have any questions, or if I can help you in any way, feel free to call me, text me, or whatever. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Hart?
Piggybacking off of Commissioner Blake Moore, it's wonderful to see the involvement, to see each and every one of you here. That helps us, as I said before, it helps us do our job, having you guys and being involved, with feedback and ideas, and just thank you for being involved, thank you for what you do, and we appreciate you, and anything we can do to help, that is done.
Very good. Mr. Hart?
Yes, do thank you, Ms. Foster, and your team. I want to thank the city of Fenton, those of you that were there, I mentioned at our last meeting, the Freedom Festival they had here, and that was a really great event, they had the old football field there, and it was, I think it was about 6,000 feet, it was a good event they had there. And another thing I want to point out is to the citizens of District 3 across Taylor's Ridge, Carter and his mowers have made it across the ridge, so we're usually the last one in the county, and I care a lot about that, but they are there now, and they're working hard, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. And to piggyback off, right, Ms. Foster, thank you so much for all your hard work and your team, they did a wonderful job, and I was telling Terry Henry, her name is like alumni today from Lefebvre High School. That's very nice to see folks that I was in school with that had stepped up to the plate and community leaders, I think it's a wonderful thing to see, so very proud of all that. Also, just want to mention, Little Lake Land Trust is having a Tales and Trails 5K run on Saturday, sounds like a fun event to do a little walking and running and take your dog with you, so you can look at Little Lake website and register for that. And when we're out, the Sycro Community Club is having a post-July 4th get-together this Saturday at 6:00, and love to have some folks come out, and just thank you everyone for coming tonight.
Very good. I'd like to, just seen a lot of new faces here tonight, so don't make this your last meeting. Please come back, be with us, we want community involvement, we want interaction, so please come back, don't make this your last meeting, and I'm glad everyone's here. And again, stay for the photo before you go here tonight. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss with our legal counsel some items dealing with personnel and also with real estate. We have a motion, excuse me, a second for that motion.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Do you want to, maybe take the pictures before we go in to keep some of these folks from staying?
Yes, when we take our break, we'll take our pictures.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So, I'll second the motion, go into executive session, discuss personnel issues.
Personnel and real estate.
And real estate.
Personnel, real estate.
All right.
Any further discussion? We will do our photo before that. Very good. All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank y'all, we'll take a recess, then we'll do our photo before we do something. Ten oh two, we've just come out of our executive session, so there's no action to be taken from our executive session at this time, so if any further discussion of the board on any item? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second, Commissioner Hart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're officially adjourned. You guys back?